Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, April 21st. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Banks.
Present.
Councilman Brightwell.
Here.
Councilman Cruz is absent with notice. Councilwoman Hayes.
Present.
Councilman Hicks.
Here.
Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Council President Mandabon.
Present.
And I meant to say, Councilwoman Hicks. Council President Mandabon is here. We have a call.
Thank you. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will get right into our agenda this evening. First up is our communications. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The city council may not provide responses to public comments during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communication, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future. Each speaker will have three minutes. We ask that each, that the audience give each speaker their proper respect. And once communications is completed, we will try to address any of the concerns that were brought up during communications. We will not answer everyone as they, after they speak, we will wait until the end. Our first speaker is Madeline Hobbs.
I am here today because I am a resident of Southfield, I'm a senior citizen, and I found that my septic tank had failed, and I needed to connect to the city sewer. I am here because I want to share information with you to ensure that no one else has to go through the difficulty that I have experienced. Initially, the way this started, I had contacted enforcement, I called three times, didn't get a response, so I just started sending off emails. Got an email back to contact Nina Golds-Greenstein. Talked with Nina, we talked about the loans and grants that were available to assist me as a senior citizen. And so, we did that. This was provided of different contractors, and from that, we selected Mr. Morris. Permits were pulled, the job started on February the 6th of this year. Whereas he went out, he disconnected my septic tank, and we still do not have any connection to the city sewer. So I have had sewage in my front yard, he has torn up all of the city sidewalk, I have no patio in my backyard, he has parked in my neighbors' driveways, the backs porch, the steps are all broken, my lamppost is gone. He started a new dig the other day that took up the other part of my property. I have no grass, I have no front yard, the majority of my backyard is gone. He came out this morning, and they filled in the septic tank, it's just now being closed. The plumbing they did in the basement for me, they took the Y stack and cut it open, it was not capped, it's open and fumes come in. I have gone down and taped it with black tape to keep any elements from the outside from coming into my home. The window, the pipe goes across my window, so there's no room for escape. It continues across my breaker box, I cannot reach it to flip a switch if I need to do My neighbors have just been super concerned, they even tore up my neighbor's sidewalk. So, I'm very frustrated, number one. Number two, I have signed for a loan to pay this contractor, and I understand that he will not get paid until everything is completed. But at this point, it's going to cost me so much money to go in and repopulate my property in terms of reseating it for grass, laying a concrete patio, all of the concrete, the driveway that has to be redone, the lamppost that's decapitated in the front yard, the back steps to the porch that need to be done. And I have talked to several people, and so everybody is aware, but I want to make sure that you all are all aware, because no one has to go through this. I have no resources to replenish and to reestablish my property. You know, as I explained to different people that I've talked to, I worked over 43 years, and I have put my home together, and in my senior years, I would love to just enjoy my home. I don't have the resources to repopulate it, for new driveways and new sidewalks, and new porches and things like that. And still, there's so much work that needs to be done. I am, I'm thankful for the support that has been shown, I've talked to Mr. Mayor, he's been wonderful to listen to me, as where's Mr. Woodward? And I have been documenting everything, sending pictures, and sending letters out so that everybody is aware. So I want you to be aware as well. I like living in, in Southfield, I think it's a good community, but I think that we need, not that I think, I know we need more support. We have to have more support, we have to have more accountability, in terms of people that come out and do work, in terms of what action can be taken, and then how to care for that, how to help the seniors care for it. So like I said, I do not have resources to do that. The contractor said, well, I don't have any money, you know, you got bad dirt, you know, so.
Thank you. Your time, I let you go a minute and a half longer than I should have.
Oh, sorry. I'm over, okay.
Because I think it's important for us to hear this information. You did mention Mr. Woodward and the mayor, and we will, I'm not familiar, I don't know if Mr. Woodward can speak to that after we're done listening to all of communications, but I will ask him to come up. I do. All right. Our next speaker is Stacy Jackson.
Good evening, Stacy Jackson, Southfield resident. I had a couple of questions, but I'd first like to start with one that was very warm. On April 11th, one of the organizations, Motor City Fire, that I sit on the board with, we hosted our first Battle of the Bands, Silence the Violence, where we encouraged students to put down the guns, put down violence, and pick up an instrument for fine arts. And we held that first Battle of the Bands, and I am honored to say that our Southfield A&amp;T placed first place in percussions, and came in third overall with that Battle of the Bands. My hope is that next year, when we do the follow-up, that we could potentially host that in Southfield on the home turf. So that's number one. Number two, I'm not sure if anybody has followed up with that community over by Pierce in Maryland after the heavy rains, but my email box was flooded from our residents, nearly 40 residents reached out saying that their basements had flooded with sewage again. They are not getting any support from their homeowner's insurance, because homeowner's insurance is saying that this is a city issue if it's happening so frequently. Third, is to stand in solidarity with the resident, Ms. Hobbs, that just spoke. As you know, for several years, 2016, I have been advocating for the city to do more to support our residents for sewer and septic tank connections. The biggest concern that I have is that the tap-in and tie-in, the blueprints are all incorrect. Perhaps if a contractor knew exactly where the tap-in was, or was not installed, they would not have to demolish our residents' property in the first place. Ms. Hobbs' connection required one straight tie-in, one straight line up the property. Please drive by Nine Mile. They have literally demolished this woman's entire property from front to back, and still there is no connection. This resident, and those who go through those experiences, should be made whole. She should not have to honor a contract that has extended 30 days without adequate water, sewage. How is she supposed to live? Make this right. Find grant funding. And by all means, when you find a contractor who is not competent enough, that finds out after the first one or two digs that the tap is not there, to stop. Remove these bad contractors from the list. Please make her whole. She should not have to invest one penny into this project.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Keith Harris.
How you doing today? You know, one of the first questions I asked everybody in this room, have you heard of the Black Caucus? Everybody said, yeah, in Detroit. Other words, nobody know we have one in Southfield. If we had one, we would all be out in front of Ms. Hobbs' house. Now I'm gonna sit here and tell you, I've done, I've built buildings from the ground up. I've been a foreman on every job I ever worked on. I ran jobs. I sit out in front of her house all day. I documented about 50 jobs like hers. Fifty, and I can prove this. This is unnecessary. The guy dug out the septic tank, he didn't pump it out, let the raw sewage stay in the tank. You're supposed to pump it out. Second thing he was supposed to do, you're supposed to dig from the front to the back, not from the back to the front. I know what I'm talking about. You're supposed to find the riser first. You always find a connection with the city before you start digging. Incompetency is, is not accepted with our tax money. She should not, we heard the city manager say, oh, well, no jobs are over 14,000. Well, how did her job go to 28? How did, the first contractor said it was 48. I know people paying 70,000. This lady got $150,000 worth of damage. And then the taxpayers, we gotta pick up all the concrete work. And that's not the only job on Nine Mile, one next door to my family, down the street on Nine Mile. Unacceptable, unacceptable, unacceptable. We've been coming here, we've been asking, we've been praying. Where do we get the money? I know a guy, same thing. The city, after they messed up his house, then they made him take a secondary loan out to fix the yard up. This ain't gonna keep happening while y'all allocating taxpayers' money elsewhere. She's not gonna pay a dime if we have to take you to court. She's not gonna pay 28, she's not gonna pay zero, and the city's gonna fix the front yard, the backyard, and the contractor will not get paid. He has insurance, we sue his insurance company, we will sue the city. Enough is enough. You should not have to retire and live like this. That's not retirement, that's torment. Every one of y'all should be ashamed of yourself. Get out on Nine Mile, get out on Nine Mile. Get out the truck, get out your car, and see what's done. Don't be scared, get your hands covered. Now I gotta go to the next city.
Our next speaker is Harmon Gunther.
I'm here to talk about my favorite subject, the handicap ramp by the police department. This, I brought it up at the Committee of the Whole meeting, and if you remember, I mentioned that the handicap parking is on the south side of Parks and Rec Pavilion. The ramp goes from the parking lot to that building, and then if you want to go to the front of the police department on the south side, to, to use the handicap button to open the doors, you gotta walk around. Now, they were nice enough to put a pathway across the lawn area to the steps, which doesn't do me much good. Now there are only eight steps from the surface of the building down to the parking lot. I realize that the incline that's needed prevents a ramp to be put in front of the building, but there is no hindrance at that point on the east side of the, or west side of the building. So I'm asking you to take, or the building, or the facilities manager in the building department, take another look to see if there is feasibility to put a ramp there, because it would not interfere with sidewalk, any sidewalks, it would not interfere with the level of the building, the entrance of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Diane Brookings.
Mayor, council members, everyone. I am a 40-year resident, I've been a homeowner for about 29 years, and I just came here tonight to say thank you for the reconstruction project on Nine Mile between Losher and Evergreen. Prior to that project being completed, I used to drive out of my way to get home because the road was so rough, and at the time, I had a car that sat kind of low, and I used to feel every bump. But now it's smooth sailing, and I also, if you had just fixed the road, I would have been satisfied, but the redesign of the sidewalk is so pleasing and inviting, it just adds to Southfield's reputation and character as a walking community, and I think it's very welcoming. So I just want to say thank you, I certainly am pleased with how you've been allocating our tax dollars, and I just wanted you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vanessa Johnson.
Yes, my name is Vanessa Johnson. I live at 17718 Off to Vista Drive. I've been living out here for 50 years. We had a flood in June of 2024. We did not ask the city to come and do a restoration. One of the workers outside called the city and had them come, and they just tore my basement up. It is in shambles. I called and called and called, and talked to everybody in the administrative, even the mayor, I've called him several times. Someone said they were gonna send us out some paperwork to tell us what will be happening with our basement. We had a full, nice, beautiful, beautiful basement that we entertained our company and my family every year. For the past year, we could not have any family down there. They came and took up my floors, took out my paneling, took out my drop ceiling, just, it's just awful in my basement. I'm under doctor's care because of this. I've been calling and calling and asking for some help, we have not got any help. I was informed that they did us a favor. Well, I would like you to do me a favor and come and fix my basement. The contractor that I spoke to, they said that, um, call this person, call this person, call this person. I have called everyone. Then I was informed that I should get me a lawyer. Why should I get a lawyer when I've been out here for 50 years and never had this problem before? Our insurance company is not taking it up because they told us that the city is responsible for it. So the city did it, so the city should come out and fix it. I would like to have someone call me, text me, email me, something, when they'll be able to come and fix my basement. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amande Johnson.
Pardon me?
Is, there's another Johnson?
No. I spoke for him.
Okay. Our next speaker is Reginald Barnes.
My name is Reginald Barnes, 24350 Southfield Road, representing Empowerment Church and the members of many residents that attend our church. Before we begin this session, I respectfully acknowledge the rules of procedure for communications established by the city of Southfield, including the understanding that the city council may not respond to public comments during this meeting. However, due to the urgency and longstanding nature of this issue I raised tonight, I am requesting a written or verbal response at your earliest convenience. Weeks ago, I submitted concerns and questions during public appearances through written communication regarding the rezoning proposal at the intersection of Southfield Road and Silver Maple Street. To date, I have not received a single reply, which is deeply concerning and disappointing. My concern is this: What policy, procedure, or legal justification permits the planning commission to revisit and advocate for a rezoning application for a business specifically a proposed oil change facility that was previously rejected by the city council vote without canvassing the area? Suppose the city council, as the elected representatives of Southfield residents, issued a no vote. How can the same petition have reemerged as a conditional rezoning from the office services to a general business with the same intent without public notification or transparency? To many of us, this action appears to be circumvent the authority of this council and dismiss the community's voice. The residents, particularly those on Maple Street, invested in this neighborhood based on its serene and residential character. They did not anticipate the construction of a commercial building with a three-sided brick wall directly across from their homes, or their interestway. This is not the neighborhood vision they bought into, and neither did the Empowerment Church. The potential impact on our community is significant. When the Empowerment Church purchased its property, we chose this location for the peace and tranquility of its surroundings, not for the increased traffic noise and industrial aesthetics that such business brings. There is no disrespect to the petitioner, but there are other main thoroughfares in the city of Southfield to build, so why did you pick this area? Therefore, I respectfully ask, has the planning commission followed all legal and ethical procedures? Has the community been properly notified and involved in this revised proposal? Was the city council consulted before this item reappeared on the planning commission's agenda? Our investments, our homes, our churches, our community spaces are at stake. It is crucial that we have a transparent process and an honest answer to whether the will of the people and this council's prior vote are being respected or ignored. I want to say thank you for your time and consideration. I await your response and please, this time, provide an answer that is deserving of justifying the results. I urge you to consider the gravity of this issue and the impact it will have on our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then our last speaker for this evening is Fay Chapman.
I'd like to first thank Councilwoman Hayes for the invitation, and the council for receiving me today. I am Fay Chapman, I am the owner of Carrot Cake with a Twist. It is a bakery business, and I've come before you because we are now beginning to move from Detroit and expand into Oakland County. We are in Bucharest Grill downtown Detroit, and we serve some of the most excellent desserts. Our motto is, we take the ordinary and turn it into the extraordinary. I've taken the liberty to bring you some of our treats today, and I'm gonna have someone join me as I pass them out, but I am hoping that we will be able to expand even more so. Right now, we're in Bucharest Grill on Northwestern Highway, one day a week, and I'm looking to expand into the entire week. We're open downtown Detroit seven days a week, and we're also open on the Avenue of Fashion on Livin' Oy's in Detroit, two days a week. I began this business in 2015, when I was an administrator, I went unexpectedly deaf, at death, and it was, is still medically unexplained. I have a carrot cake that I bake that is to die for, and someone encouraged me to begin to sell the carrot cakes to supplement my income and to go on disability. I'm not the disability type, so I decided I would begin to build on this carrot cake, and it began to grow and expand, and thankfully, the gentleman who owns Bucharest Grill, he fell in love with our cake, and many of our treats, which I'm quite sure you will too, and he invited us to come down and begin to sell our products in his business, because he does not have desserts. And it just began to grow. We have expanded into so many other areas, we have companies that have talked to us in Grand Rapids, we have people who drive down from Grand Rapids to pick up carrot cake just to buy it all, so that they'll have enough to last, we have customers from Ann Arbor, so we have a very strong customer base, and we are looking forward to building that customer base here in Oakland County. Again, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to come and speak with you today. I hope you are blessed by the desserts that I brought, and I also, I think Councilwoman Hayes has passed out our business card. I also want to say that Pastor Dr. Aaron Chapman is my son, so I am familiar with the Southfield area, I love it here, he loves it here, and we invite you to come and visit us sometime at the New Hope Baptist Church at Nine Mile and Telegraph. Again, thank you, I appreciate your time today.
I love carrot cake.
Okay, that concludes our communications. We had a number of speakers, we're gonna try to answer them the best we can. I don't know if our building director can answer the questions about the sewer line, I know that usually it's the building department that issues those permits. I don't know if you're familiar with this issue, and if you can address the concerns.
Good evening, council. I am familiar with this issue, I've been involved with it since April 17th. I was alerted to the condition by several people, Nina, administration.
Can you speak up, please?
Can everybody hear me okay? Want me to start over?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've been involved with this particular case since the 17th of April. It was brought to my attention about the conditions and the lack of progress. I met with Ms. Hobbs at her house. She's a very wonderful and patient woman. This particular project has been going on since February. When I saw the conditions there, I had filled out my report, provided that to administration, to Nina, and to DPW. to Nina, and to DPSW. I don't have the report in front of me. I did forward it to the mayor. If council would like, I'd be happy to send that later on this evening. But just to go over some of the highlights or lowlights, the sewer line that was installed to replace the septic tank that had failed was not finished upon my arrival. As a matter of fact, it lay in a trench full of water. This, the line was back pitched and floating. There was extensive damage to the property from the rear of the home all the way through and affecting the neighbor's driveway, the sidewalk, her patio, and many other things that she had mentioned. I, of course, recommended that we do something about it immediately. DPSW took it upon themselves to try and rectify the situation. However, the contractor did show up that following day, I believe it was Good Friday, and attempted to connect into Oakland County's sewer, not ours. So that was in a manhole. Did not finish the job. I discovered that this morning, as well as receiving an email from Ms. Hobbs very early in the morning. I told Ms. Hobbs that I'd be back there today, and DPSW is alerted to the conditions. I do believe that they are right now contacting hazmat people to take a look at the sewage that may have been, or may not have been discharged into these open trenches. Any questions?
Well, before, before we take questions, I, I see our Director of Public Works in the back. Do you have anything you'd like to add before we take questions? I know we're putting you on the spot, but if you'd like to come up and see if there's anything you can add. Because I know there are a bunch of questions, but...
No, I think Chuck covered it all. I mean, really, as, uh, we became aware of this last week, right? And, you know, when we found out that the contractor's not showing up, there's long delays, we sent our contractor out to at least complete the connection so that the sewer will be functioning for Ms. Hobbs here. But the original contractor showed up, so we gave them the opportunity to complete the work. And then today, we found out they didn't complete the work on, on Friday, so... WRC, the contractor had a, had a, had a certain plan for the connection. WRC, the, the county, uh, came out and told them they had to reroute the sewer in a different alignment, and so that's where things stand right now. And, you know, we're, we're going to follow up and, and make sure that the contractor completes this.
Okay. Councilwoman Hoag?
Yeah, I don't want to open the discussion here. Ms. Hobbs, we're just hearing of this to, today. I would just ask, can we please have a follow-up? We need to hear about this by next Monday this time? And just rest assured, we'll stay on top of it, Mrs. Hob. We just, we just became aware today, so if you will just allow us the time to get, you know, the situation from our DPSW director, and we'll stay on top of it. And we'll make sure that someone reaches back out to you, and we apologize for what you had to deal with. I, I don't think we should discuss it here. I think we should...
Yeah, we, we don't have enough information up here, but I am glad that you have the contact of, of our building director, and he was responsive to you even this morning and came out and will, will get it fixed for you one way or another.
And I just wanted to ask, stuff like that, when you send it to the mayor, I think we should always be kept in the loop as well. Wouldn't you guys think? Because we're the ones going to push it through as well, so, um, because this is the first I'm hearing of it. But if we could get a follow-up next, early next week, if you don't mind. He's good at that, so, okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Banks?
And I would also like to reiterate that all of council, um, the copy and whatever is being circulated regarding this, because again, this is the first time I've heard of this, and there's a few things I don't understand, but I'll wait until I see the report. Thank you.
Councilwoman Haynes?
Yes, I spoke with Ms. Hobbs prior to the meeting. I encouraged her to stay so she can get feedback from us, and, um, it, what she was saying about the septic, I agree with Councilwoman Hoag was saying, and also to the fact that I'm very sorry to hear what happened to her, and everyone up here does feel, I'm sure, the same way. We are all residents here too, and we would not want that to happen to us, so just want to let her know we understand. Thank you.
All right, so, yes?
So I echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and, um, I just want clarity. Is she connected to sewer now? Okay. So I, I'm looking forward to seeing the report as well.
Okay.
Mr. Jeff?
Yes.
Just to, uh, go along with my, my client, my colleagues, this, this is horrific, and, uh, at, at some point in time, someone needs to explain to council why, why this situation is what it is today, and what was the, was, was there a failure on our part, or what? How did this, how did this happen? We want to, at least I want to clear explicit example, clearly explain the statement as to how did this happen? Okay.
Uh, don't go too far, please. But Ms. Hobbs, you hear council is, this is the first time, at least we are hearing of it, but I'm glad that you have been in contact with the people that will help you get it done, so... Unfortunately, we can't, we don't have a back and forth right now, but I'm sure they'd be happy to talk with you in the hall if, if you need. Since we have our Director of Public Works, I know you were here for the other speakers about the flooded basements. I just want to preface, you know, I, I can let you speak to that more, probably more in depth. I know, I know every house, every situation is different, but to the, to the Johnsons, you know, the council didn't meet last week. We did talk with our Public Works Department. From the flood that happened last year, there's currently an investigation going on by an independent third party. So we met on the status of that. I can't, unfortunately, cannot go into those details, but it sounds like there was some issues with the cleanup and in the basement that you had, but I don't know if...
So this is my first time hearing about this, but, and I'll follow up on it, but as far as like removing ceiling tiles and this, you know, that's not within the scope of SWF's, uh, you know, assignment. So I, I'll be interested to see what happened here.
Okay. So I have, I have the Johnsons' phone number and email, as well as their address here. I will forward that to you, and then once you have a chance to speak with them and learn more, again, if you can report back to the council so we can be aware of what's going on. So to the Johnsons', this is our, this is our Director of Public Works, so he will be in contact with you later, probably sometime tomorrow.
Or we could talk right now.
Or, or talk in the hall if, if you'd like, so... Okay. Thank you. We had, just going through the list of speakers, we had another speaker who spoke on the flooded basements, and again, that's, as I just mentioned, it's, there's a, currently a third-party investigation going on. Yes, there was some additional flooding a few weeks ago. I, I was receiving calls, as I mentioned, to my colleagues. Many of them were sump pumps backing up into basements. There's a number of reasons that can go into it. It could be blockages, collapses of sewer leads, lack of sump pumps, malfunctioning sump pumps, poor drainage around the basements. There's a number of factors that can lead to the basement flooding, and as I mentioned, the council did hear a, an update last week, and that investigation is ongoing. We did ask them to include this last rain event in that, and once we have more information and a, and a conclusion from the independent third party, after the council has reviewed it, we will be reaching out to the neighborhoods that were affected, especially those homeowners that we have records for, and explaining what the investigation showed, as well as next steps that the city is taking, as well as next steps that homeowners can take as Mr. Gunther spoke about the police department ramp. As he knows, a lot of it is, unfortunately, the pitch and the time, the, the space that is needed for a handicap ramp is sometimes not feasible. But again, our building department did hear your comments this evening. They could take a look at the west side of the building. But again, the council is looking at a comprehensive plan. This building is over fifty years old. There's a, a number of, what, what, a number of issues as it relates to handicap accessibility that we try to adjust as needed. Sometimes they're not feasible, but as we look to renovate and modernize this building, the handicap accessibility is one of the things that is on the forefront of our plans and what we're trying to accomplish. So please, please be patient as we, as we go through that, and our building department will take a look at your suggestion for the west side of the building. We had a speaker who came to thank us for road repair and for some sidewalks. We always welcome those comments and appreciate those comments, so thank you. And we will be doing more road repairs in this, this coming season. The council will be hearing more about that next month as we go through our budget plans for next year. The oil change business, Mr. Crowe, if you want to touch on that, I know that, as the speaker mentioned, there was some confusion, or they're not sure why the, if the council rejected it, it's now coming back so, so quickly. If you can touch on that, that would be appreciated.
Through the chair. The original request was a straight rezoning from OS to B3 that failed to move forward. The petitioner came back with a different request, which was the conditional zoning, which eliminated a number of the uses that would have been in the underlying zoning of B3, plus made other changes. So therefore, it was a, it was a different type of rezoning request, and that's why it was allowed to come back. Planning Commission and the city council followed the same public notice requirements. So from the previous rezoning to this rezoning, everyone within three hundred and fifty feet were notified. There's public notification in the paper. There's two public hearings. That has also been maintained. The second public hearing is next week, so council will be having their public hearing next week. And then finally, council directed us to try to get the applicant to meet with the church, which I know, I saw correspondence, that they made themselves available Friday and all day today. Mr. Payson is going to follow up tomorrow to see if that meeting did take place, but I know that the applicant has reached out to the church several times in the course of the last couple of weeks to try to have a meeting. But the final public hearing's next week. It is a different type of rezoning, and that's why it's being entertained.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to say something.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah. I know Mr. Barnes, is he still here? Because I encouraged him to stay. He, he spoke with me in the, outside, and he said that the meeting was not confirmed, so therefore it didn't take place. I don't know why it didn't happen, but that's what he told me. And he also said to me that it was the way that they went about things, if you will, is why they are opposing, because I was trying to explain to him the fact that there are oil changes in other places as well. So I would encourage them to do the meeting, but he said it just wasn't confirmed, that they had a date and it just didn't get confirmed, so...
Again, I was CC'd on the emails. They made themselves available Friday and all day today, and they were waiting, waiting to hear back from the church, so I, I, we're going to follow up tomorrow.
And you sent their notices that were sent to residents' houses as well?
Yes. I mean, the same process, three hundred and fifty feet. It's noticed in the paper, and there was two public hearings, one at the planning commission, and you have your second public hearing next week, so the neighbors have been notified. We go above and beyond what the state requirements are.
That's what I explained to you. Thank you.
Yes. As I mentioned in the call last week, my, my question is not, or concern isn't against the petitioner in particular. My concern is more procedural, because when the original request came before council, it was real specific, we want to rezone for this purpose. It wasn't a, this rezone from this class to this class, and we'll come back to you with what we want. Nothing changed other than exclusion of other things that they can't do, but it's still the same item that was presented initially. So to me, it's, I didn't get what I wanted this first go-around, so let me try it again. At least that's what the illusion is.
Okay. If I could, and I'll defer to the city attorney, and I say this all the time, when council is zoning from one classification to the other, you have to consider all of the potential uses that are permitted by right, as well as a special use. An applicant may come in with a specific use they're intended to build. However, once that gets rezoned, that applicant could decide not to go forward, and any other applicant could come in for any of the permitted uses. So we always have that long list of uses. So even though the applicant wanted to open specifically an oil change, when you're making your decision from OS to B3, council should be making their decision about all the potential uses that could go in there, because if the applicant decides not to move forward, any other applicant could come for any of the permitted uses or special land uses. The conditional zoning is legally and legislatively allowed for the applicant to come in with a specific use and eliminate any potential other uses that may not be wanted, whether it's a marijuana provisioning center, whether it's a gas station, whether it's a car wash. So the applicant legally had the right to submit for a different type of application. Plus, on the site specifics, they made changes and amendments based on comment that were received the first time through. So legislatively, legally, they had the right to due process for you to consider a different type of rezoning. That's why it came back. Same public hearing notice requirements, the same advertisements, the same processes followed in both cases. Now, typically, if, if an applicant wants to ask for the exact same thing that he was denied on, there's a, there's a one-year waiting period. But in this case, this was a different request of use, and, and in the eyes of the law, it's a different rezoning request.
So, well, have we set ourselves up for, as a precedence, for other petitioners to do similar?
Well, again, I, this is rare that this has happened in this particular way. There have been other conditional zonings that have been requested, and it's in the best interest of the city sometimes to consider those because they eliminate other noxious uses that the city may not want to consider in the future. It just happened in this particular case that they, they, they took advantage of this use. That's all I can say. And, and when you're, when you make your decision, it really should be more specific on the conditional use that's being requested versus the broad range of uses. So the conditional use request will list the permitted and those that they're, they are excluding. It's not a negotiated, they offer those exclusions to the city for consideration.
Was that recommended initially to the petitioner?
I, I was not aware of that because I was on family medical leave during the time, so I, I cannot speak to that. Thank you.
Yes?
If I just may, excuse me. Good evening, council, I'm just getting my voice back. But also a conditional rezoning, as Planner Crowe just stated, there's not a going back and forth, and I, under the Michigan Zone Enabling Act, the city cannot... and forth. And I, under the Michigan Zone Enabling Act, the city cannot recommend the conditions only to the petitioner. There is a specific paragraph that says if someone, as in this case, says these are the conditions, and I'm, you know, willing to, I guess, subject my property to for land use, they are the only ones that can present it. So there is no negotiating back and forth. And everything that he said is pretty much is based on that zoning enabling act. This was just a, a different situation. So there is a statute that gives the very strict guidelines about it.
Thank you, and I hope your voice gets better.
Okay. Thank you. And then our, our last speaker, who is expanding her business carrot gig in a twist to Oakland County, welcome. We're glad you're here, and we hope you're very successful.
And if the mayor doesn't want his piece, I'll leave it.
I have to say something. I should say, I'm concerned about the way that my allergy, the products do contain radish and pineapples. I just wanted to make that clear.
You're vertigo today, right?
All right. Thank you. All right. That concludes our communications for this evening. And again, to the, to the Johnsons, you said you've been patient. You, you know who our Public Works Director is, and he's more than happy to meet you in the, in the hallway and speak with you.
Thank you.
All right. Council, next we move on to the consent agenda. Our consent agenda items are items that are considered routine, non-controversial, or have previously been discussed. Council, do you have any items you wish pulled for further discussion?
Yes. And I've spoken to a couple department heads today, but in item A and B, item D, item B is at the request of one of our senior citizens tonight, and also item L.
You said A, B, D, and L?
Yes.
Counsel, any other, anything else? All right. So item A and B is for the police department. As they make their way up, why don't you ask the, your question, sir?
The first question is, are we comfortable with this bid, the M and M building service? That's, that's a very low bid, $21,000, and everybody else is up to close to $40,000. So is that, we're comfortable with that?
Yes, sir. As you're aware, we did put it out to bid through the purchase department. They were vetted through the purchase department, and we are satisfied with that bid.
Okay. And you have worked with these people before?
I'm sorry?
You, you say you have worked with these people, remember, did you have worked with these people before?
No.
Okay.
I believe DPW has. I believe DPW has.
Okay, then. The other one, item B, I was around when we first started using the Oakland County driving class years ago. And I thought we would, we would be rotating individuals through as they came home. But it indicated that obviously, we have a backlog of about 23 new, so has, has that been suspended with respect to rotating new officers through there? Or do, or do we just wait until we get a critical mass to sit in one time?
It is a combination. Unfortunately, Oakland County is the only agency that does provide this specific type of training. So we are dependent upon their availability. And we typically will have our training coincide with theirs. So they will train their department, and then we'll follow up behind them. So it really depends on mostly their availability. And then we will wait until we do have a larger number of individuals to put through the training, so it's more cost-effective.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, that pretty much, you covered it based on that. All right. With respect to item D, the Crohn's disease, Mr., our senior citizen asked me to pull this up for a little more clarification. And could you just give what are the clarifications you, that would justify this happening?
Sure. The Crohn's and Colitis Foundation approach us each year. It's a partnership where they host a walk that provides fundraising for the Crohn's and Colitis group. They have a business with us here in the city of Southfield, recently in the last year and a half, two years. It was originally hosted in Royal Oak. It's been about four years now, and we get between 1,200 and 1,500 folks that walk the event. It's supported by our city, Parks and Recreation. Police are out on the course as well. No streets are blocked. This course has been kind of developed by, by planning and Parks and Recreation and, and the, the groups. So we feel like it's a, it's a good hosting for our city on our front lawn. Crohn's and Colitis provide education for folks that are affected by those two diseases. Actually, they bring in a, a bank of restrooms that are both heated and cooled, so that folks don't have to use the porta potties, even though they're out there. We've got 1,500 people coming in. So they take extra steps and extra precaution, and they've been a pleasure to work with for the last four or five years.
Okay. All right. Very good. And I will highlight the individual. Mr. Gunther, is that sufficient? Is that what you want to hear?
I want to know the dates.
The dates?
The date of the event, I believe, is May 31st.
Saturday, May 31st.
Yeah. But they come in and set up on, on the day before, Friday. And they bring in some tables, chairs, and a tent. And yeah, it's, they're very good. They have security there Friday night to make sure everything is intact and ready to go Saturday morning. I know the mayor has, has come out to the event and often spoke. So it's, it's a great partnership with them.
Okay.
They also moved their offices to Southfield.
Okay.
For Southland Company.
Very good. Thanks for the clarification.
Sure, no problem.
Yeah.
Great. And then your last question was on L?
Yes, item L.
Street lighting. L for lights. What's your question?
This, the, the grant was approved in 2023. So why, 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 what, why was the delay in, in implementing this?
Well, in 2023, in the fall, was when we learned that we were successful with the grant. So there's been quite a bit of coordination between DTE and the city to come up with the cost estimates. And DTE had to, and then that agreement came to city council for the DTE agreement. And then they turned it over once that agreement was signed to their planning group to do the actual design. So it does take several months for that whole process to work its way through. So M.D. just recently sent us the grant agreement. So this is our final step before we can hold a pre-construction meeting, and then DTE can get started.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, madam.
You're welcome.
And, and obviously, I've spoken today to a couple of department heads. So, oh, you're done. I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Just, just letting individuals know that I don't necessarily take up time unnecessarily, but we did reach out to a couple of department heads. We got a couple answers earlier today. And with 20 items, we have a very acquisitive process here. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Hicks?
Sir, I move that we approve the consent agenda. Item A, ceiling tile replacement project for police department. Item B, Southfield Police Department Emergency Vehicle Operation Training. Item C, authorized agreement with Kimmy Horn Productions. Item D, Crohn's and Colitis Foundation Walk on the Front Lawn. Item E, authorization to accept and execute into local agreement for 2024 Oakland County Access to Transit Program Grant. Item F, Authorization to Award Contract with OMH Advisors for Professional Design and Engineering Services. Item G, Authorization to Purchase Benches and Trash Recipacles for Pedestrian Bus Stop Improvement. Item H, Oakland County Michigan Works, Southfield Wagner-Pizer Grant Acceptance. Item I, Oakland County Works, County Partnership Accountability Training Hope Grant Acceptance. Item J, Oakland County Michigan Works, Southfield Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Grant Acceptance. Item K, Application for R Y C A C O for Commercial Rehabilitation Exemption Certificate. Item L, Approval of Agreement for Civic Center Drive Street Light Upgrades. Item M, Water Main Connection Agreement for 2002, 3015 Inchester Road, Farmington Hills, and 2515 Inchester Road, Farmington Hills. Item N, Authorization to Purchase Sign Shop Equipment. Item O, Tool Boxes for Motor Pool. Item P, Authorization to Purchase Parts for Vehicle Upfitting and Repair. Item Q, Receipt of Bids for Tree Planting. Item R, Purchase of Variable Frequency Drives for Court Mechanical System. And Item S, Repair of Building Support Pillar.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilman Hoag, to approve consent agenda items A through S. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I just want to point out, in our consent agenda, there were, I think I counted five or six grants that we are using to enhance the, some are pedestrian grants, some are grants for Michigan Works. So we are utilizing and getting those grants as best we can to further the, further Southfield and help our residents.
Say that again.
All right. We have one item for discussion. That is our capital improvement plan, our program. Mr. Crowde?
Good evening. I'll try to go through this quickly and then be available to answer any questions. This process is an annual process that the planning department, in coordination with the planning commission, undertakes, which starts in December. We start contacting department heads. And then the planning commission holds a number of study meetings, makes a recommendation. Last week, we met with the council finance committee and made a presentation, and tonight is a presentation to full council, and hopefully we're asking your consideration for adoption. What is the CIP? It's a capital improvement program. It's a six-year period for inclusion into your annual budget. Typically, years, year one is your actual budget. Years two through six are best estimates or projections from departments, so that you could see what's coming down the pipe, what the needs are. This is constantly updated on a year-by-year basis. But for example, if fire department needs a large purchase of a vehicle, or there's some major roadwork that's happening, and council's deliberating on their budget this year, they know that there might be additional expenditures. This is typically physical improvements that are permanent in nature, or substantial equipment purchases over $5,000. And the CIP is beneficial to the community because it's a systematic evaluation of all potential projects, coordination between major departments, and a uniform plan for financing. It also is required by the State Planning Enabling Act and requirement as a redevelopment-ready community. This is basically the state law that says that each department, local unit of government, shall provide a plan for public structures or improvements, and furnish that to the planning commission with lists, plans, and estimates of time and cost for those public structures or improvements. The last CIP was adopted in April 2024. There's a copy of the plan. And a full copy of the document can be found on the planning department's website. Again, the process starts in December of each year, with the conclusion of an adoption typically in April, just prior to your May budget hearings. There are eight main departments that contribute: equipment, facilities, water and sewer, stormwater and flood plains, parks and recreation, data management, roads and bridges, and pedestrian enhancements. And this plan is, is good as the cooperation from all the departments, which we get excellent cooperation year in, year out. The Southfield Public Library introduced several exciting new features. They launched the SPL app, created the Information Accessibility Center, beautified and improved the front walkways and around the children's garden, and introduced popular new programs. Summary, status of past CIP requests are listed here. We are now including a summary of what has been completed from last year's plan and what is in, in process for completion. Major initiatives in this upcoming fiscal year is chiller replacement, air handling, airflow valve and ductwork, and building condition assessment within anticipated costs of $6.4 million. Library has been ongoing commitment to access and inclusion, increased space programming assessment, mobile study booths, and mobile lab, laptops and furniture that can be moved throughout the library and taken to outreach events throughout the community. The library continues its dedication to provide resources and instruction as people's needs evolve from just books. Apple Mac, Creative Space Lab, and a recording studio are some of the new technology in response to users' requests and surveys. The Southfield Police Department, doing this for quite some time now, I know that these equipment, vests, the police cameras, the security equipment, have a life shelf of five to eight years, so they're constantly rotating. Ballistic vests, body cameras, tasers. A new feature that was added a couple years ago is the Flock license plate readers. Not only does the police department install them in strategic areas, the city center has purchased a half a dozen, and many of our large corporate partners also have Flock license plate readers. This is, database is tied in with other communities throughout southeast Michigan, as well as the country. So when there's a stolen vehicle, an abduction, lost child, police officers get real-time data on, on license plates that might be in the system. And this has helped tremendously in solving crimes and getting the perpetrators quickly. One of their large requests is a mobile command center. Their current one is 20 years old. It has an estimated cost of $630,000. However, half a million dollars have been identified through grant funding. There was a question during the finance committee about what the older mobile command center would be used for, and that is being investigated, whether it be kept within the city for other uses or put on the market for resale. Again, we talked about equipment upgrades and staying abreast of latest technology. And then there are a number of building repairs and remodeling that is needed, as shown here in these slides. I know one of, one of the needs has, has come up repeatedly over the last couple of years, is crime lab renovation. And they are, have strict laws on disposal, once a crime has been adjudicated, returning of the possessions or disposing them. But these are all secure, and they can be stored off-site. A question came up during the finance committee. Also, the detention center is in need of several renovations. And then here is just a summary of projects that have been completed from last year, what are in progress, what have been delayed, and what have been canceled. The Southfield Police Department does a great job of inventorying their equipment, vehicles, usage, mileage, and need of repairs, which is outlined in this slide here. Also, equipment, they have constant needs to keep their equipment reliable and state-of-the-art for the support of their fire services. There are some miscellaneous repairs to existing facilities, as well as their Stryker EMS support system. Support System. They do a routine annual assessment of their facilities, many of which are several decades old. And their immediate needs for replacement are listed here. Replacement of flooring at Stations Number Four, dorm partitions in Stations Three and Five, kitchen remodels in Stations Four and Five, storage room update, renovations, and painting. However, their large projected capital investment are, is listed here. New Station Number One at $25 million, new Station Number Three at $10 million, and so forth. Some of their department exterior improvements are listed here. A year or two ago, they built a new fire training tower that council's familiar with. DPW Motor Pool have a list of vehicles that need to be upgraded or purchased over the course of the next fiscal year, with regards to water, sewer, roads, and bridges. Responsible parties, Public Works. So they, they use a map using our Township Square system, but Road, Water Main Sanitary, Mountain Vernon, from northwestern to Southfield, Southampton Sub, Section 25, Plumhouse Sub, Section 34, and Hooper Boulevard. They will be receiving upgrades for all these utility. Roads only would be 13 Mile Road between Southfield and Greenfield, Greenfield Road between 12 Mile, 13 Mile, in conjunction with the Road Commission of Oakland County, as well as Greenfield Road between Lincoln and 12 Mile. And water only, Section 11 Water Main Improvements Phase Two. And then there's various signal upgrades throughout the city for a total of $55 million. Using the Pacer system, engineering based on funding and grants in the cycle of the roads, they typically have a four- to five-year projection of where these improvements will take place by fiscal year, which are outlined in the map above. And then, as far as completions from last year, light towers, Section 24 Sherwood Village West, a utility locator. In progress is the redesign of the underground lift station. Delayed is upgrade of one lift station, and canceled is sewer relining. And that was an error based on the qualifications for CIP, so they have removed that. Stormwater and floodplains, this is ongoing in, in evolution with sustainability, climate change, and best practices. But current stormwater projects include Bauervik Woods Bioswale Rain Garden, the Rouge Green Infrastructure and Tree Planting Project, George Coon's Green Infrastructure Program, and stormwater utility study. And this is locations of these projects that are either underway or planned in the near future. Completed recently is the LTU Wetlands and the George W. Coon Drainage District Green Infrastructure Program. In progress is Bauervik Woods Bioswale Rain Garden, Rouge Green Infrastructure and Tree Planting Project, and the George Coon Green Infrastructure Program. With regards to Parks and Recreation, recently, the city celebrated the reopening ceremony at Carpenter Lake Nature Preserve last year. Their programs are committed to serving residents' needs by being flexible and innovative in delivering quality services. Through diversity in programs, ideas, participation, they advocate in building healthy and active individuals, families, and communities. And they currently supervise and take care of over 770 acres of parkland and open space as well as seven facilities. What's been completed to date is listed up on the left. In progress is Beechwoods, Evergreen Hills Golf Course, Loser Woods, Dog Park Parking Lot, Carpenter Lake Nature Preserve, Fishing Pier is being reconstructed, and Inglewood Park Drainage Issues, and some playground equipment. And here is a list of six completed projects from last year, seven that are currently in progress, seven that plan to be completed this calendar year, and five that are delayed. Future projects include Civic Center Racquetball Courts, Freeway Park Redesign, Inglewood Park Improvement Study, and purchasing two trucks. And then there's a list of ongoing future projects in 2026. Here's a breakdown of their funding and revenue. With regards to data management system, again, they're constantly updating their equipment to stay ahead of cybersecurity programs, computer replacements, server replacements, document management software, BSNA financial system, firewall maintenance, Cisco switch replacements, in-car laptop and docking station replacements, UPS replacement, secure badging system, gigabyte telephones and fiber Ethernet. Now, a question came up during Finance Committee. Renee did provide answers that the desktop phones are much more affordable in the long run. I'll share those with you, but also the desktop PCs versus laptops, that the cellphones and the laptops tend to get more damaged, or lost, or destroyed, and they cost a lot more money to replace over the course of time. And there's still, there's some limitations with the use of cellphones versus the desk phones that multiple people have multiple extensions on, but that, that's all been detailed in their responses. And then, the best is saved for last, the pedestrian enhancements. Only one or two smiles?
I smile.
I smile.
Okay. So, in our sustainability realm, we continue to try to be innovative, using motion-activated solar-powered light bollards along a couple demonstration areas in the City Center Trail. We hope to launch that into multiple trails throughout the city, including our parks. We've installed 40 units to date. Hopefully, you've seen the seven sets of solar-activated smart technology recycling and trash bins throughout municipal campus. They also are, give us an opportunity to promote our art and sustainability in Southfield. And when they get close to being full, they send a signal via nap to the facilities, parks, and our department that they need to be emptied. Again, there's room for improvement with recycling here in Southfield and throughout the state and nation, but we're working on our sustainability plan. We've done a number of surveys with Southfield employees, Lawrence Tech University. We've had one virtual public town hall meeting. We had an in-person town hall meeting, and then I believe on May 10th, we have our final town hall meeting at the library. And our goal is to reduce our carbon footprint, save money, and be good for the environment, and to promote active living. Some of our department highlights is we continue to partner with the Arts Commission, the City Center, Lawrence Tech, and other private individuals to install additional art and placemaking, to extend our bike path system, and to fill in any gaps in our sidewalk system. We have been using master plans, chipping away each year with allotted money that we have to complete out our system. Again, we were a very auto-dominated community, built out quickly in the 1960s and 70s with little thought of the pedestrian or pedestrian connections. We're trying to be more walkable, and I'll tell you, the one resident who spoke under public comment could frame those quotes about enjoying the walkability and extending our pathway system. So, we continue not only to build out our, our system within the city, but to make connections to regional trails. We've made tremendous progress along Nine Mile Corridor recently with the amount of grants that we've received. We're partnering with our 10 communities along Nine Mile and South Oakland County to connect I-75 on the east to South Lyon on the west. So Hazel Park, Oak Park, Ferndale, Southfield, Farmington, Farmington Hills, Novi, Northville, Lyon Township, and South Lyon have all entered into a memorandum of agreement. We've adopted guidelines, we've adopted a branding campaign, and with your support, we hope to be one of the first, if not the first, to have the new branding established at Bauervik Woods Park along Nine Mile as a trailhead. It's strategically located in the center of Southfield, but also strategically located along the Nine Mile Corridor. We see Beechwoods Park as being a future trailhead, as well as some property at OCC, three strategic trailheads. The goal is to have residents in Southfield be able to access the City Center Trail or the Nine Mile Trail, then connect to literally hundreds of miles of regional trail via the Livernoy Connector to the Joe Lewis Greenway, and then the M-275 Connector, which connects to hundreds of miles of regional trail. We completed a half-mile section at Bauervik Woods in 2022. Last year, we completed from, to, west to Loser with a 2024 TAP grant, and connected to an existing pathway that was built in 2018. We've received year-in, year-out funding from our Transportation Enhancement Program. So in '25 and '26, it's likely the construction will happen in '26. We will have Evergreen built to Greenfield. And then, we received a grant, Access Transit Grant. We're doing preliminary engineering to figure the feasibility and the cost for a pedestrian bridge across M-10 and M-39, so there's a continuous pathway along our six miles of Southfield. We're also looking at Valley Woods Trail from 12 Mile down to 10 Mile. And then we continue to work on branding and wayfinding, placemaking throughout the city. As you know, we've worked with council on upgrading our entrance signs, whether they be a ground entrance sign like this shown at Nine Mile and Greenfield, or some of our mini entrance signs, and we'll be coming back to you shortly with a bid proposal to finish up the main entrance gateways into the city with the mini gateway signs. We continue to make our community more bike and pedestrian-friendly, using strategic areas for respite stations and streetscape furniture that are all branded and tied in depending on what part of the city they're located. And I've already talked about the solar bollard lights, our wayfinding maps, some of our strategic trail, trail maps, and then connecting eventually to Northland, City Center's one-and-a-half-mile perimeter path. Incorporating streetscape with council's support, we did Phase One. We've installed two new Greenfield gateway signs, as well as banners and some initial landscaping. We hope to do another phase this spring, and hopefully with your support, some additional funding the north end of Greenfield next year. And then, we work collaboratively with our community partners. This in particular is Let There Be Light Gateway, originally funded through a grant by the Eight Mile Boulevard Association, and we're working in conjunction with the Road Commission of Oakland County, MDOT, Oak Park, City of Southfield, Southfield DDA, and the City of Detroit to do some beautification and artwork on this dimly lit underpass at Eight Mile and We secured $200,000 in funding to accelerate our bus stop improvement and pedestrian enhancement. Tonight, you approve the purchase of 42 sets of benches and trash receptacles. We'll be coming back to you shortly with a bid for the installation. And then, this is last three-year total, but we have improved 60% of the original 375 bus stops that we identified in the city. And then, we have some other long-term projects, but we would like to make the front lawn more accessible to our users and patrons, and we might be working this in phases over many years, but we do have a concept plan that's been developed in partnership with the city administration and Parks and Rec. And then, here's a list of completed projects. Trailhead signs were installed, Greenfield beautification Phase One. We had two major public art installations, The Key and Brothers Recreation Trails. We worked with Parks and Rec to install a connection from Nine Mile to Beechwoods, as well as a new pathway at the Dog Park at Loser Woods Park. We've done preliminary engineering at Valley Woods. We've got new shared-use pathway from Prescott to Loser. Southfield mural program, we installed three new murals, as well as received a grant for over $20,000 from the DIA. That will be installed this spring at the I-Serena, and we've done a number of sustainability projects and continue to do tree planting. In progress, we have, as I mentioned, more pedestrian bus stop enhancements and some additional art installations that have already been funded. And then our Greenway, Nine Mile Greenway Corridor, we've received funding for two fiscal years. There is a delay with the bidding process and the engineering, but we, we think both of those projects will happen in fiscal year '26, '27. And then, as Councilman Mandabom had indicated, this is just a list of recent grant awards that we've been successful in leveraging and bringing to the city for many of the projects that I just talked about. So with that, be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Council have any questions? So I'll just, I'll just mention, you know, to, to council again, thank you, Mr. Crowde. I know this is a few months' worth of work from multiple departments. It's all done in-house. This is a great, great information for the council and for the residents, because this is how we build our budget. This, if you see something that's out a few years, it may not necessarily happen, but this is what our wish list is, and everything always depends on grants and funding in our city budget, but it gives us at least a five-year outlook of what we're trying to accomplish for, for bigger things. Some of them are the regular, we need to replace some infrastructure, we need to replace vehicles. Those are common, but then you always have, you know, the wish lists from the different departments. Do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, just, I, 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 I need to make a shout-out to Sarah Malali, because she's done the coordination with all the departments. She, she does the heavy lifting. And then I want to thank all the departments, because it's a lot of work, but we get good cooperation. Didn't always happen that way, but it's a smooth process now. And Austin Michaels would, would want to say that just because it's in the CIP doesn't mean it'll be funded, but you can't get funded in your budget if it's not in the CIP. And what the CIP, someone had asked me, just in this fiscal year is $111 million, and then the total of $296 million over the course of six years, but that doesn't mean that's all city money. A lot of that is grants and leveraging of other funds. So I just wanted to add that as a preface, if you see, see these big numbers. But hopefully, it's a tool for the council to refer to as you're adopting your budget.
Okay. I did have one question. I was not going to ask, but since I see our city librarian here, I did have a question for you in, in your slide for the library. It talked about Creative Space Lab additions, and one of the things was analog to digital conversion tools. Does that mean that if I have old tape cassettes, that I can come and digitize those?
Anything old that you have, you can digitize and turn it into something that you can now share with future generations.
So, and I'm familiar with this, because I've, I've been going to a library in other city, but if I bring in my, I just need the tape cassette, you provide the, all the equipment?
but if I bring in my, I just need the tape cassette, you provide the, all the equipment to digitize it. Do I need my own computer, USB drives? What, I'm just curious now.
Oh, those are really good questions. So those are big specifics, which I will definitely get for you.
Okay.
But what we want to do is we want to provide the opportunity for you to have the equipment for you, and also teach you how to do it yourself.
Okay. It's exciting. I can stay closer to home.
Yes, you should.
All right. Since I called out the library, does anyone else have any questions for the library? Library-specific?
Oh, no, not the library, no. I like the library. I appreciate you guys.
Okay, Councilman Banks?
Good job. Thank you. I just want to thank Mr. Crowde and his team, as well as all the department heads. The council finance committee reviewed this presentation in great length, and I think it's one of the best that we've ever put together. And like you said, this is going to help and assist us during our budget sessions. So, Mr. Crowde, thank you to you, your team, to Sarah, and all the department heads for putting together a wonderful presentation.
And I did ask the department heads if they were going to be here tonight, if they could stay in case you had any specific questions. But again, this is only as good as a team effort, and this is really one of those collaborative team efforts that everybody pitches in on.
Mr. Brightwell?
Yeah, this is more of a compliment for Terry. I think I give him his compliment every year. When I first got on council, you know, I came out of corporate America in the finance area, and I used to sit in on these sessions that a technology company that I worked for, we spent $5 billion a year updating our infrastructure. And so when I came here and I saw that you were going through this process, this is not my first time complimenting, it was soothing to know that, you know, cities and municipalities that are really, you know, on the cutting edge of things, they do similar things that we did in corporate America, make sure we stayed current in our infrastructure and our equipment was modern to the tune of, that company spent about $5 a year making sure they were updating everything so they can be competitive. So it was, it was just, you know, it was uplifting to realize that we are cutting edge with respect to making sure Southfield is planning appropriately, and we are planning for the citizens, and we are planning to, how best to spend our money. And I guess, again, I really thank you for that, Terry, and I'm not sure who started this in the city of Southfield, but I know was here before I got here, but you, I think you updated it and made it better.
Thank you. And again, I thank you on behalf of all the other departments who put a lot of work in.
And thank you to those department heads that stuck around. Just because we didn't ask you a question doesn't mean we're not going to bug you later on in the year. So I know, Mr. Crowde, you're looking for a motion.
Yes, we'd like you to adopt the plan and...
Mr. President.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the plan as presented.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to adopt the capital improvement program for fiscal year '25, '26 through '30, '31. Any other questions?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have an ordinance to enact.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I move that we enact ordinance number 1809, PZR-O, no, zero?
Oh.
DD-25-0001, the request to rezone the parcel at 16,400 JL Hudson Drive.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilwoman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hope, to enact ordinance number 1809. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're up to the council portion. Councilman Brightwell?
This is for my veterans. There are free, there's free legal services for veterans here at the city of Southfield. The first Monday of each month, right here at the, when you check in, just check with our Ms. Rhonda Terry at the neighborhood offices there as you come in. The things to be covered by this free legal services are consumer debt, homeless prevention, which deals with eviction, mortgages, and tax foreclosures. They have a family law, they assist you with divorce, child support, PPOs. Also assist you with food assistance in event you need it. Also unemployment, employment, law matters, criminal records as far as getting expungements and or license restoration, estate planning, and VA benefits. So it's fairly comprehensive. If you're a veteran, and you have any of those type issues that you want to address, there's a free legal services at the city of Southfield, the first Monday of each month from the hours of 9:00 a.m. until 12:00 a.m. here at City Hall. And if you have any questions, just feel free to call me here at City Hall, and or call Ms. Rhonda Terry here at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Haynes?
Yes, real quick, I just want to go a few things. First of all, I would like to address, the person is not here now, but one of the persons on the communications made a statement that they received over 40 emails from residents. I just want to put this out over the airwaves, that I would like to encourage the residents to call us, the people here that are sitting on the council. This is what we are here for. This is our job that we do. We would like to respond to issues that you have, and we will respond to issues that you have. And it's not just going to be a talk or just for show, but I want the residents to know, you can go to the Southfield City's website, and every council person up here has a personal email address and a personal telephone number. It's very important that you call us before, even if you have any questions that you're not sure of, just as the lady was saying there. And even for someone that's listening later, I would like to encourage the organizations, and I'm sure my colleague would agree with me, that's with the Neighborhood Association, to put it out to the presidents, to have your residents to call us. It's one thing to have someone on the street to make a lot of talk about things, but we get things done up here. And we make them happen, and I want to make sure the residents know that. So just wanted to put that out there, and we're happy to get that done. That's what we're here for. We're serving leaders, and I want to make sure that people know that and just appreciate that. And real quick, I just want to go into some fun things. I had the opportunity to attend the Guns and Hoses hockey game. It was a very chilling experience, if you will, but it was very fun, and the police department did win. I was thinking that the chief would be here to talk about it. He didn't have to wear the fire department shirt, but it was a very nice game. I think it was four to two, and just hats off to Mission, five to two, thank you, Mission Barbecue. They had a nice raffle, nice prizes, very well attended, very nice event that happened. And also, I want to give a special shout out, and I'm going to call these persons names out, because I thought it was very nice. I was invited to the senior spring tea, and it was April the 11th, and the entire Park and Recreation Department was there, serving all the residents. It was a very nice experience. There were women from all over the metro Detroit area, which was really nice to say that people actually came to Southfield to enjoy themselves. So I want to give a shout out to Angie, Kathy, Nicole, Anessa, Betty, Chris, Erica, Stephanie, Tanisha, Sean, Holly, and of course, the entire Parks and Rec department head. It was, it was very nice. We had such a good time, and the food was fun. And I think that we have, if we just continue to have more experiences like that, we'll bring more pleasant treats to Southfield and bragging rights, too, if you will, about different things. And a real quick note, on the 24th, on the 24th of this Thursday, rather, from 6:30 to 7:30 in the Southfield Pavilion, we will have an Oakland County Town Hall with 12th Congressional District official Rashida Talib. It's an Oakland County Town Hall, and we will have, we will have our very own city councilwoman Coretta Hope will be speaking at this event, and our commissioner, Lenny Taylor, in addition to Rashida Talib. But I just wanted to make note that we have someone right up here that will be representing us, and we're proud of that as well. So thank you for that. And I didn't want to give any particular programs, but please, the library has so many programs, just go support the library. We're just up here talking about that. There's so many nice things about gardening and what have you, from A to Z and from zero to 100 to do. So just support the library as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hicks?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Councilwoman Banks?
Yes, I would like to remind everyone that this coming Saturday is Household Hazardous Waste Event at the RASOC facility located at 20875 Maple Ridge Avenue. You will be able to bring clothing, shoes, accessories, and small household items to be recycled at this event. They will also be doing paper shredding, so you can bring up to three boxes or 100 pounds of paper to be shredded. And if anyone hasn't been there, it's interesting, because I just recently found out that they have paper shredding there, I guess you could say seven days a week. And there's a door on the far right side, you can go, take your papers, watch it be shredded right in front of you. So you don't have to worry about blowing up your home shredder when we've got this beautiful massive shredder right at our Eight Mile Facility. I think it's, I was so excited to find it, and now that spring is here, it's time to clean the paperwork up and up out and shred it. So again, this Saturday at the RASOC facility on Eight Mile and Maple Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hope?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank all the attendees that came to our meeting today. It takes a lot to come out of your schedule, and whether it's good news or bad news, I just want to thank everyone who come out to speak with us. It helps to engage with us. Thank you.
Thank you. And this, this Sunday's a touch-a-truck event.
Yes, touch-a-truck. I thought you were going to talk about it.
Yeah, so...
I left you something to talk about.
I appreciate that. Southfield has a lot of events, so there's enough for all of us to take a, take a turn and speak about. But the Touch-a-Truck event is this Sunday, the 27th, from 1:00 to 4:00. The first hour from 1:00 to 2:00 is sensitivity hour, where the trucks will not have any lights or sirens going. So for those who have a sensitivity issue, will take advantage, 1:00 to 2:00. At 2:00, there will be a flyover from a helicopter, I believe, and there's also going to be some drone demonstrations from our police department, a K-9 demonstration from the police department. But it's, it's great, you get to go into the, into the trucks, and it's not just municipal trucks, it's not just police and fire. They bring in tow trucks, they bring in gaming trucks, they bring in bulldozers. It's, you know, trucks. Unfortunately, they will not let me or Councilman Hicks drive any of them, even though we keep asking, but it definitely, you can at least sit in the front seat and pretend. So please take advantage of it. It's a, it's a great event every year. I also, and on some good news, I want to wish a congratulations to our city treasurer. He had a granddaughter last week, I believe, his third grandchild. So congratulations to him and his wife, and the continued building of their family and with grandchildren even more. So congratulations to you. With that, Mr. Mayor?
Good evening once again. As was mentioned earlier with the Planning Department Capital Improvement Plan, our Eight Mile Gateway, Let There Be Light Gateway project, fundraising or crowdfunding project is underway. We're about a third of the way there to get the matching grant. We have 32 days left. If any of you haven't donated, we encourage you to do so, as well as our viewing audience. By popular demand, we have the Friends of South Public Arts is doing their vintage fashion show on May 16th at 7:00 p.m. at the Skyline, former Skyline Club. We have the facility for the evening. And we've been contacted by representatives of Southfield's own, Selma Blair, the actress who grew up in Southfield. One year, she was even featured in our city calendar as a teenager. So this event is to help us raise funds for the Nine Mile Pathway and the art that is going on that strip as part of our plan to extend and be a leader on the Nine Line, that that again was reported earlier to you. And there's one other event that I was looking for, and of course, now I'm not finding it. But, oh, Saturday, we have the Fair Housing Bike Ride. For years, particularly the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, has been a proponent of fair housing. We have, unfortunately, even in this day and age, we still have housing discrimination for various minority groups, for the elderly, handicapped. And so this is an organization that the city and our city housing commission, as well as the nonprofit housing board, has supported. So this is a fundraiser, 10:00 this Saturday in front of Parks and Rec. It's a 14-mile bike ride. You have to wear a helmet, and there's a donation for participation in this bike ride. There are stops along the way, including at St. John's Armenian Church and at Sherazetik, and a couple of other points. So it's not a 14-mile race, it's a, it's a ride. So that is this Saturday. And also, one other event I wanted to mention, on Friday, at 11:00 a.m., we are doing our annual Arbor Day Tree Planting, and this also will take place at Parks and Rec. Again, it's 11:00 a.m. Tomorrow is Earth Day. I know the schools are, have prepared an event that they'll be working in a park, weather permitting, and that starts in the morning. We then do our annual Arbor Day observance. Always plant a tree every year, but we don't plant just one. We have one significant tree. In the budget that you'll be seeing next month, there is money allocated to purchase more trees. With the storms we've had, we've lost part of our green canopy, and it's important due to global warming and the severe storms that we've experienced, that we continue to plant trees. Every time I hear a buzzsaw or chainsaw going in the neighborhood, I, it drives me a little crazy. There's nothing wrong with tree trimming for safety, but we cannot be cutting down our trees. We, I think we need the... We, we, I think we need them more than ever. So again, these are some upcoming events I, I hope you'll support.
When, when's the tree planting, you said, that you're doing?
It's this Friday, the 28th. It's, no, it's not the 28th.
25th.
25th, sorry. This Friday at 11:00 at, in front of Parks and Rec, where we are actually replacing a tree that had succumbed to a disease and is, was removed. So thank you for that. I hope to see you at some of these events. And please contribute to our Let There Be Light Gateway project. Thank you.
Did you want to mention your State of the City?
Oh, yeah, we're, we're inching towards State of the City, but to put a, put it on your calendar. State of the City is going to be very different this year. We are holding it at Lear Corporation. Lear has generously offered the use of their spacious lobby and their auditorium, which is off the lobby. Lear Corporation is on Telegraph Road below Nine Mile. The event is a ticketed event. Because of security, there'll be no walk-ins. People will have to secure a ticket in advance as we're entering corporate property and obviously have to follow their protocols. The event this year will start at 2:00. It's not a lunch, but there'll be the networking prior, and then the State of the City address. And then following that will be a reception in, in the lobby. So I know Shelley Freeman is working on your reservations. The Chamber of Commerce is also helping to sell tickets to this event. And then a week later, we will do the Free Community State of the City on the 13th, 12th, Thursday, the 12th. So it's June 5th at 2:00 at Lear. And then on the 12th, at City Hall in council chambers, we will have a repeat, which is a no-cost event. Thank you for reminding me.
Thank you. Mr. Deputy Administrator?
Thank you, good evening. As mentioned by the mayor already, tomorrow is Earth Day, and the Wildlife Advisory Committee is partnering with Southfield Public Schools. We'll be conducting a trail cleanup, starts at 10:00 a.m. We'll be meeting at the park shelter behind the ice arena. Just bring your work gloves, everyone's invited. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Attorney?
Good evening. No, it's actually a lot better, but I don't have anything further to say.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Good evening. I just want to remind the audience that tomorrow, April 22nd, at 4:00 p.m. is the deadline to turn in any nominated petitions that you have, that you may need to have completed to run for office for this year's primary general election. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Treasurer?
Thank you again for the warm wishes. I appreciate it. And I just wanted to remind the viewing audience that the deadline for paying up any delinquent water bills for 2024 is the middle of May to avoid the balance rolling over to the summer taxes. So we encourage everyone to please review your balances. Make sure if there's any delinquent balance for 2024 year to be resolved and can be paid online, it can be paid over the telephone. Please contact the Water Department if you have any questions. Their telephone number is area code 248-796-4850. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We talked to the planner earlier. We have nothing from the assessor or the engineer, nothing to schedule. Our meeting is adjourned.